Good evening and welcome to the September 11, 2023 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one topic for discussion, and that is the Blum Park Trail Improvements Project conceptual design update, and I'm going to turn it over to Sandra Gross.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thanks for the opportunity to present the conceptual design of the Blum Park Trail Improvement Project. I'm Sandra Gross from Public Works and am joined tonight by the city's engineering and design consultant, KCI Technologies, represented by Rick Hayne and Adam Islam, who will make a presentation on the conceptual design plans which have been developed following site visits to the park with city staff. The design focuses on the enhancement of the existing trail system along with the development of new naturalistic loop trails, overlooks trailheads, interpretive signage, and includes three fair weather stream crossings through Wetstone Run. It also includes the refurbishment of the existing gazebo and the existing trail bridge. This project will be going through the city's development review site plan process, so you'll be seeing it again. We will be holding an informational open house for the surrounding communities to view the conceptual design on September 26 at Watkins Mill Elementary School. Rick, Adam, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Thank you for having us.
Welcome.
So yeah, my name is Rick Hayne. I'm the practice leader for planning and landscape architecture with KCI. And this is Adam Islam, who's our land development manager for the project. So I'm going to talk you through the conceptual design first. If you have any questions along the way, that's fine, you can interrupt me. Otherwise, I'll probably just keep moving along and we'll save them for the end. But if you want to, no problem. And then after I'm done, Adam, we'll do a little update on where we are with the engineering and permitting status.
Great.
So the first slide that we have here, we call it the illustrative site plan. And you know, it's basically the pretty picture of the project, if you will. But I'm going to use it, first of all, just to orient everybody to, you know, where the project is and where some of the elements are around our borders. So obviously, you know, this is Watkins Mill Road here. This is the Wetstone Run Stream Restoration. It passes underneath a bridge here. This is the clusters of Stedwick Apartment Community right here. The Watkins Elementary School is further up the road on the right. And this is the Winbrook condominium community here. And then we're bordered also by the Pepco Gas Line Right-Away and a townhouse community on the other side of the easement or the right-of-way. And there's some existing parallel parking right here on Watkins Mill Road. And that basically is your site access. There's also existing hiker biker trails which bring you into the park to a circle feature. And then there is an existing boardwalk overlook structure that's covered, that is located here. Can you see the pointer?
Yes.
And then there is also an existing bridge that is located here. So to keep moving along, I'm going to go to the next slide. So this one, we're calling the illustrative trail map. And it's a little bit more of a map like drawing than illustrative. And it starts to, you know, identify the trail alignment that we're proposing and other features. And I'm going to walk you through that. So, you know, our task again was to create a trail system that's more of a passive park. And so we're not doing, you know, heavy, we're not doing paved trails. This is going to be shredded hardwood mulch path system. Some imagery of that is located up at the top. I would say that for at least 50, well, the majority of the path system will somewhat resemble this top left slide because there's wooded conditions along this entire perimeter. And bringing you back to the circle, this area right here in the stream restoration area will look a little bit more like this photo, which, you know, is more like taller grasses that we're going to be putting the trail through. And then, so we've identified, and this has all been staked out, and the alignment is pretty well fixed at this point. So we, in our thinking, and when we walked it, you know, we walked the most desirable lines that we could come up with. And so the trailhead will be here. And there's going to be three fair weather stream crossings. There's going to be one located here. And then you walk a little bit further, another one here. And then you walk along to, over the existing bridge. And then there's going to be another fair weather stream crossing located here. And the nature of those crossings, especially on this side, there's an embankment to get down to the actual stream. So we plan on putting these boulder steppers into the slope like this so that, you know, you have easy access down to get to these fair weather crossing. And the fair weather crossing would mostly resemble, it'll be something similar to these flat stones that you step on to go across. And, you know, we still need to study the depth of those stones and still get, you know, passage of water through them. So that'll be determined. It hasn't been completely determined yet. But the idea is that you'll be able to traverse the stream under most conditions. Obviously, during, you know, extreme storm events, you're not going to be able to, which is why it's called a fair weather crossing. So, and then we have some other features along the trail that we are proposing. So this is, at this location, there's a really nice wetland feature. This big area, this loop right here is basically a wetland, but it's not, it's not like a wet wetland. It's more like a dry wetland, if you will, a Ford, if you will. So, but there's some really nice plant communities in here. And this is a, when we were walking the trail, we thought that this was a really nice opportunity to create some views looking out into the wetland area. So we're proposing a wetland overlook deck at this location with some seating. At the end of this slideshow, I'll show you some preliminary views of what that might look like, although we've developed them further than what you see in the slideshow. But when we put this together, it was, you know, something similar to this that would have a boardwalk type features with some seating incorporated into it. And we're also going to introduce some interpretive signage there as well. I'll get into the signage in a minute. And then there's also going to be some other seating and resting locations. So the, there will be seating at the backside of the wetland overlook deck. We also spotted another really nice viewing location located here, which we're going to put a bench there. And then down here in the stream restoration area, this is going to be a nice little node that's going to include, you know, some seating, interpretive signage, and a nice view of the entire stream restoration. And then, as you're walking back to the trailhead, we also spotted another opportunity located here where we're going to introduce more seating. And also, we thought it'd be nice if we added an amenity that was a trellis swing so that you could, you know, take a rest and actually take in the view in sort of, you know, a better way than just sitting on a bench. So it adds a little interest to the project. So, and then next, this slide is a little more of the technical drawing of the project. And so this is the topo map showing the same conditions, the same legend. All the items that I just mentioned are all on all three plans. But you can see in this drawing, you know, there's some topo conditions. There's some steeper topo on the outside of the existing circle. There's some embankments built in near the road. And then there is, you know, there's a ridge on the backside of the project with a pretty strong slope coming down. And then it flattens out into the wetland area. And then this is actually the as-built topo that we're showing here from the stream restoration. So, you know, again, a little bit more of a technical view of the project. And then what I also wanted to cover here was the interpretive signage for the project. We're proposing a total of five interpretive signs. The first one would be at the circle, and this would be the trailhead sign. So it would be located here, and it would be somewhat similar to this sign where we would be showing a map of the park and basically the trail system. It probably will be very similar to the previous slides that I just showed you as far as the graphics would be going. But this, we're working with a sign, interpretive sign vendor on it, and the signs will look very much like these. So they will be very attractive and durable. And so that was the first sign. And then the second sign that we're proposing would be mounted to the existing deck rails at the overlook structure. And that we would like to introduce as a park history sign. So, you know, we might get into, we still need the content for these, but obviously, you know, the history of the park, why it's named Blum Park, you know, maybe some key points in history. Obviously, the stream restoration would be mentioned, and then finally, this trail system. And then there would be, a third sign would be located at the wetland overlook area. And this would be, you know, incorporated into the deck of the overlook, and we have an image of what that's going to look like. And then the fourth sign would be located down here in this little amenity area. Again, I'll show you a picture of that. And that would speak to the stream restoration project. And then lastly, we don't have a location yet, but somewhere along the trail system, we would like to introduce a native plant community sign that would talk about the native plants in the park and, you know, provide some photos and maybe, you know, a look, where's this plant kind of ID for some people to, you know, have some activities as they walk along the trail system. So this next view is a view of the wetland overlook deck. This is a preliminary sketch-up model. We've actually completed this, and it's, you know, like, this isn't all going to look like grass. This is just a preliminary model. But, you know, we modeled all the slope coming down to the deck. And so if you're just focused on the deck feature itself, you know, what we plan on doing again is, there is some slope coming down, and we might pull that up with some timbers, get a couple of benches and some seating back in here. You'll walk across a little bridge to get to the deck overlook. There would be some perimeter seating around it. And in the middle, we would have the interpretive signage that would talk about the wetland. And then the last slide that we have is this slide. Again, we've developed this into a full illustrative at this point. This was a very preliminary view. But it does talk about the elements of, this would be, you know, the fair weather crossing located here. The trail system that would get you to the interpretive signage. It talks about the stream restoration. And this, there's a slope that's located here. This is where we would use the boulder steppers that we're showing you in that previous image to get up that slope. And then a nice little sitting area with benches, you know, in a way that really focuses in on that view of the stream restoration. So that really is the summary of the conceptual trail plan. I can take questions now, or we can let Adam talk about the, more of the engineering side, and then take questions at the end.
Let's let Adam do his part.
Yeah, so I'll talk a little bit more about the engineering aspect and kind of where we're headed from here and, you know, what we've been tasked to do with the city of Gaithersburg. So, you know, we're kind of looking at this from a multifaceted, you know, different views of analysis. So I'll point out a few things we were tasked to do. So our structural engineering team, and so within KCI, we have a lot of different disciplines. And so that's where we kind of, you know, we're able to utilize a lot of our resources. So our structural engineering team was asked to evaluate the existing overlook bridge or the existing overlook just for its current shape and stability and upkeep, any of that nature. So, you know, we provided an analysis to the city of Gaithersburg for that as well. We were asked to also evaluate this existing bridge along the trail itself to figure out its lifespan and capacity as well. So that was part of our analysis. And then, as Rick had mentioned, the new overlook that would be placed along the trail itself that is also being designed by our, you know, structure engineering team. It's probably going to be on deep piles, helical piles, and that had to be specifically designed for this structure itself. So that's kind of what our structural engineering team is doing. So, but looking at it from a broader viewpoint and perspective, you know, we had our surveying team kind of go in there after Rick and his landscape architect team had gone in there and flagged out where this trail would be going along through this entire park. They had to come back in here and actually pick it up with their survey data and instrument in order to kind of get that on actual geolocation so that we had it in AutoCAD format so that we can actually, you know, impose it back on our existing data that we have here. So everything is actually accurate, you know, everything is actually measured in the field. So, you know, we're working with real data in our hands here. And then, okay, so they were also able to get some additional topographic data along this circle over here. So we were asked, we were told that there was some areas of low spots and some areas that needed to be, I guess, re-graded. So, you know, we did, we picked up some additional topographic shots over here. And then the other important thing was for our natural resources, environmental team to kind of get in there and figure out, you know, where the wetlands are, where the floodplain lines are, where the wetland boundaries are, floodplain boundaries are, and all that stuff, buffers, I'm sorry. So, you know, they need to get all that information so that we can put it all on the plan because they have a very important job here, which is to actually go through MDE permitting. So they have to do what's called a JPA permitting. So in that permitting where it's basically telling them anywhere there's a stream crossing and that they're doing work along the stream, they have to do what's called impact plates. So have the design impact plate showing the actual amount of disturbance that's happening along that stream and, you know, find ways to remediate that. So we're actually in the process of working on developing these impact plates and working on creating a submission to MDE, which will hopefully be early next week is kind of what our environmental team is asking or telling us to do. My land development civil team, what we're tasked to do is, you know, based off of this preliminary concept plan here, we're doing more of the construction documents, CD documents per se. So we go into more details where we're doing cut sheets on basically every, maybe 100-foot section. And just to bring it out a little bit as well, the trail itself, the material that the trail will be made of is going to be mulch. So we're looking at a section of a four-inch mulch material overlaid of a four-inch of number 57 stone, which has good drainage material. So we're trying to keep everything as natural as possible. And, you know, we're trying to not introduce too many concrete surfaces or asphalt surfaces. You know, we want to keep the natural feel of the entire park itself. We felt that was very important to the city and just the overall feel of the park itself. So, once we start creating this CD set, you know, you'll see that, you know, it's going to be a lot more pages which goes into detail on, you know, this is where the shape of the trail is going to be, this is how it's going to look. This is, you know, the cross-section of the trail itself. And there'll be a lot of details which illustrate and show, and, you know, the design of the trail. So, I mean, it's a little bit hard to see here, but the trail is going to be four to six foot wide in width, and there's going to be a two-foot barrier or a two-foot strip on either side. So we're looking at about a 10-foot width. So we have details which illustrate, you know, when you come along trees, this is what you do. When you come along, you know, certain rocks and wood, this is what you do as well. So that's kind of what our detail pages are going to show. So once we submit the CD set to, you know, the city through the site plan review process, they'll be able to, you know, see that and give us more feedback if they want to see more details. But, you know, we're basically trying to put on the contractor's hat and say, hey, you know, when the contractors went out there to build it, you know, what is it that they want to see? What is it that, what kind of details do they need when they're actually, you know, using our plans in order to kind of do the actual construction itself? And then another important thing that we're going to do in our CD set is called the rojan sediment control plans. So that basically tells them that, you know, the contractors, when they're actually doing the construction, you know, we don't want them to make a big muddy mess out there. You know, we're trying to say, you know, use silt fence as needed, do soil stabilization as needed, do hauling and removing as needed as well. So that's a very important part in order to kind of keep everything tidy, keep everything in order. You know, try to make sure that there isn't any runoff going into the stream itself. You know, we want to protect the natural environmental features, which here there are plenty. It's kind of hard to see here, but, you know, once you actually see the CD set and you see the breakdown of, you know, what the buffer lines are, what the floodplain lines are, what the wetland lines are, you know, that'll kind of show you. There are also a couple of water and sewer lines here. So we have that mapped out on our CD set along with the easement widths from the water in the sewer line so that that's very, you know, clear and defined so that once the contractors go in, they can, you know, easily target, you know, this right here is a water line, this right here is a sewer line. You know, we don't want there to be any surprises when they're going out there and, you know, during the construction itself. But yeah, I think that overall, our next steps will be to finalize that CD set and to submit it to the city for review as part of the site plan process. And yeah, so there'll be, there'll be two processes that's involved there. It'll be the concept level submission, and then once we have comments back and we incorporate those comments, then there's going to be a final submission set that we submit to the city. And then, like I said, there's also that MDE permitting that we're going to begin to do in the upcoming weeks itself. So that's kind of where we stand with the engineering side of things.
Great, thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. I, so first, overall, this is very exciting. This, I think, you know, what we're looking at here is a dramatic improvement over what the condition was at that park before our stream restoration project. So I think ultimately, the people who go and utilize the park will, should be happy. I mean, this is, this is, this looks great. I do have a question, and I'm sorry, forgive me if you addressed this earlier because I'd missed it. But the existing structure, that overlook pavilion, what's happening with that?
Well, we did have an engineer and assessment of it. And basically, it's structurally sound is what we found. It's fine, but there are some deck boards and railings in there that we think just need to be updated for, you know, they're getting older and they're for aesthetic purposes. We're going to include that in the upgrade of the project.
Okay, great. Jim?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I agree with the mayor, it's very exciting. We've got a number of questions over the years about when the trail is going to be put in at this park, and I'm excited to see this progress. A couple of specific questions. The deck that you list, have the 3D sketch on page six. Just how high off of the ground would that end up being at its?
It's approximately four feet at the highest point.
Okay. My only concern is just with children using that, it looks like you'd have open seating that could fall off. So I'm wondering if we might need to have a railing all the way around.
We're covering that. It's a good, very good question, a very good point. And so we're looking into all the code issues associated with that. The, to the best of our knowledge, and again, we're going to confirm this, if you have a barrier that separates you from the fall, anything over two foot six, it qualifies as a barrier. But we're going to, we're going to definitely look into that issue for everybody's safety and make sure that it's, you know, even, you know, it might be, again, when the project gets reviewed, and it might need code, but if you still have a concern about it, you know, we'll put in the railing all the way around.
Great, it's beautiful, I'm just.
It's a very good question.
Thinking, thank you. And then with regard to the mulch path and the maintenance of the mulch, I know we've had some challenges at other parks with natural materials. What is the lifespan of something like that? And is there any concern about, you know, washout from heavy rain, those kinds of things?
Another good question. I think that the base, that the granular base that we have under it is going to help, certainly with the drainage aspects of the project. It'll help the trail itself drain well. You know, the biggest challenge will be, most of the trail system is pretty flat. But that area along the backside of the project where the slope comes down, you know, there might be some storms where the trail might be a little susceptible to a couple of concentrated areas of washout. We don't really know. You kind of find that out after it's built and see, you know, what those issues are. But it is a very consistent slope, so it's not like, I don't see like really, like, concentrated water coming in over that's really going to cause like a trail wipeout of any kind.
Okay, those are my questions.
Okay, Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is a work of beauty. Question about the fair weather crossing and the stones. So when I look at them, I think of slip and falls.
Yep.
Okay, is there a concern? Is there a resolution to that concern?
Well, what we're going to find, I mean, they're all different ones, but we do want to find flat-top stones that have texture to them, okay? So that the texture will greatly help with slips and falls. And we're going to try to find, you know, a spacing in between those stones so that, you know, everyone can negotiate them easily, whether your parents or children walking them with your hand over the stream. And, you know, this is, this is the standard method for fair weather crossing. You know, you can find them constructed everywhere. So that, you know, it's a reliable system. Is it 100% safe? Nothing is 100% safe. But I think that, you know, between the flat-top boulders and the texture that we're going to make sure that they have, it should be safe.
Okay. I guess to Lynn, do we put signage up, I don't know, to beware or what is your own risk or?
Liability.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, usually we don't. In the parks, there is an assumption of risk that anytime you undertake any activity in a public space, that, you know, there are inherent dangers and risks to it. You know, otherwise, we would have signs, you know, everywhere for everything.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is why I'm so glad Lynn's our city attorney. Neil?
All right. So I have another question related to the mulch, which is, I mean, I'm not as worried about the washout issue because you can always sweep it back in. But mulch has a limited lifespan. It rots or whatever, returns to nature. How often are we going to need to, you know, go back and re-mulch the whole, all the trails in the park?
Another good question. I forgot to answer that, I realized that was a pretty good question as well. So I'm anticipating that it's going to need annual maintenance, like, I would probably think every spring. You know, you're going to need to go in and re-clear the pathways so that we have a clear zone adjacent to the mulch way paths. And that should be done on an annual basis. And, you know, I'm thinking that it would be, the mulch would, you know, need to be assessed every spring. And, you know, and it probably, you know, it needs to be supplemented. The cost associated with that, I'm not completely certain of. And I don't know, perhaps your city staff could answer that question from their experience from other trail projects better than I could.
Okay, just, there's a lot of trails, so I would imagine there's a lot of mulch every year.
Yes, and, you know, and, you know, that is, but we also wanted it to be a natural-looking path. And once you start introducing synthetic materials or things that don't decay or hard surfaces, it changes the entire nature of the project.
No, I like the aesthetic, I just.
Yeah, I understand.
Make sure we're on top of it. I mean, I think I have the same comment about the signs. I know in the muddy branch trail near my house, there are some signs that the city put up a long time ago, and they're, they're pretty faded at this point. So is there a way to engineer these signs so that they'll last out in the, out in nature for a long time?
Yes, they use materials that are, you know, anti, or I forget what the term is, but it basically, you know, doesn't fade over time at the same rate as a lot of other materials. And I can't remember the manufacturer's timeframe, but I think it was the lifespan expectancy was around 15 years, I believe.
Okay. So just thinking through, this 15 years will happen at some point. Hopefully, we'll have the original PDFs or whatever, the original files so that we can recreate these signs as needed.
Yeah, you will own the files for the content. So that will be, you know, part of the scope of the project. So that will be, you know, part of the scope of the project.
Hopefully we'll remember where they are in 15 years.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, again, it's a valid question, but I also, you know, there would be a future cost associated with replacing them, but the interpretive signs, I think, are extremely valuable in bringing a lot of interest to the users of the park, and a great way for the city to kind of celebrate the trail.
No, no doubt about that, no argument there, I just want to make sure that we're, we're on top of what the future needs will be, as well as what we're going to do right this, right this year. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this topic? Questions, comments? Andrew, you will?
Not really the public, but I just wanted to, to just touch base with, you know, part of the reason that the mulch trails were chosen, especially for this park, was mainly because the park was planned to be passive in use, but also, the entire site pretty much is an environmental, environmentally, we could not put any type of paving or anything like that. So really the mulch is pretty much the only option, except to have dirt, but at least the mulch, if you go out there right now, previously, all they did was just kind of go, go through and mow it and just try to keep it clear. So it's pretty hard to find the trail in some places, but I just wanted to let you know, that was, we, that was our request, was the mulch. Knowing that it's going to have maintenance costs, yes, but it will also be, you know, you'll be able to, to, pretty much, it'll be open for any hiking level, you won't have to, you know, be a strong hiker to go on it or anything like that, so. But the environmental issues, and that we would not be allowed to do anything within the, the park, most of the park, without doing mulch. Just wanted to answer that question, knowing, you know, that it is high maintenance.
One more.
I was prepared.
For me?
One more point about the mulch, one more point about the mulch is, it was very important that we installed that four-inch number 57 stone, so it has a lot of voids in between the stone, you know, it's not, it's not a permeable, it's not an impermeable surface, so the water kind of seeps through the mulch layer, kind of then sits in, in that, in that stone layer, and then kind of then goes back into the groundwater system. So, you know, right now, you know, with, with the, with the existing dirt that's in the, in the pathway itself, you know, sometimes it can be a muddy mess there, you know, and it can like, you know, cause areas of concern. So, you know, us putting that mulch on top of a, a layer of stone, which has those void ratios that are, that are, that are enough to kind of let the water kind of seep down and not sit for too long on the surface, will actually help to kind of alleviate any problems of any standing water or any, you know, form of washout or anything like that. So that was, that's why it was important for us to kind of get that cross-section right, and, you know, we feel comfortable with kind of, you know, what we, what we put forth in our details. So just some more, you know, evidence of why the mulch is, like Sandra said, probably the best option at this point.
Okay, thank you. Brian, looks like you want to add something?
Just wanted to make sure, we do have a public meeting coming up, Brian Fields, Engineering Services Division Chief, we have a public meeting up at Watkins Mill Elementary, it's an open house format on September 26th, from 6:30 to 7:30. So it's an opportunity for members of the public to come meet with our staff, the design team, and look at plans and ask questions just like this, in open house format. Kind of lastly, our, our direction to our consultant for this project was, and I think you see this in the map, is to have something that is fun for all ages. It's accessible for, you know, dog walkers, photographers, if you're just looking for a hike. It's not really a, a mountain biking, running trail, especially with the fair weather crossings, but we felt like it could reach a lot of members of our community, and there's different ways they could use it, or you can go for a short walk, long walk, just go to the overlook. And then, secondly with that is, we want it to be fairly low cost to build and maintain. So, you know, we have a budget in mind, we're trying to stay within that, but then long-term, the annual maintenance would be tree trimming and restoration of the mulch path on an annual basis. With those being really the two primary tasks, now the, the wooden structures obviously need, you know, a little more care now and then, but the regular routine maintenance would be tree trimming, mulch path maintenance, so just wanted to add those two points.
Cool, thank you. All right, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to testify on this, one way or another? Questions, comments, just use the Zoom raise hand function, and I'll call on you? Not seeing any? Oh, I see one, okay. Tech team, if you could bring up Mike Jadu, that would be great. Mike, just unmute yourself, state your name and address, or neighborhood if you feel more comfortable, and I'll let you know when your three minutes is up, go right ahead. You have to unmute. Mike, are you there?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, hi, this is Mike, I just want to let everyone know that you're doing a great job.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mike. Anything else? I don't know.
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other testimonies? Not seeing any, okay. Well, we thank you for the presentation, and I will remind everyone, what you just heard from Brian Fields and Sandra at the beginning of this presentation, that September 26th, there's an open house at Watkins Mill Elementary, 6:30 to 7:30 PM, to hear, to ask questions, to hear from the project team. And that is the only topic we have this evening. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be next Monday, September 18th, 7:30 PM, you can participate, just like tonight, either in person or on Zoom. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.